Five cars in their lifetime.
Tech's climate conundrum. That's next time on the TED Radio Hour from NPR. Tune in for TED Tuesday evenings at 8:00 and Saturday afternoons at 2:00 on Radio IQ.
Climate change is one of the defining stories of our time.
The temperature is rising.
Grass stuff growing.
Catastrophic changes to this planet.
So every weekday on NewsHour, we're committed to covering the issue in a deliberate and conscious way.
You either pay now or you get to pay immensely more later.
And doing much more than simply responding to events.
They play in politics with this issue.
NewsHour from the BBC. That's the BBC NewsHour every weekday morning at 9:00 AM.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And ZSP Media, co-creator of HBO's The Jinx. And WBUR, home of Last Scene, presenting a new podcast, Beyond All Repair. Re-investigating a cold case that will leave you questioning everything. Listen now.
It's Here and Now. Lead in drinking water poses a big risk for young children, though the federal government does not make schools test for lead. More than a dozen states have their own requirements, but they don't all pay for schools to replace pipes or faucets that have lead. North Carolina this year is using federal COVID relief funding to pay for testing and reduction of lead in public schools. Reporter Liz Schlemmer of member station WUNC takes us to a 100-year-old school building in Durham.
Walking into the Maureen Joy Charter School is a little like stepping back in time. The lacquered wood floors creak as students walk to class. Sunlight streams across high ceilings. The school's chief operating officer, Samantha Ameral, offers a tour.
It was built in 1910. So this is a historic building, and we love it. And you'll see some really cool photos in the front of the lobby of what it looked like back in 1910.
From the black and white photograph, the street view of the school looks unchanged. But Maureen Joy Charter School renovated the inside of the old public school building before moving in.
They redid all of the piping, all of the paint and all of that. So all that was left was really the skeleton of the school.
Ameral says she hopes that means the school doesn't have to worry as much about lead in the water. But administrators still wanted to check. She looked into water testing a few years ago.
Yeah, it's just expensive.
She says the testing company quoted hundreds of thousands of dollars, far beyond what the school could afford.
I mean, and then, like, God forbid we find something, then that just encourages even more costs, right?
Then this year, Ameral got an email from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. It said that all public schools in the state, including charter schools, would be required to test their drinking water for lead and paint for asbestos. Eighteen states require public schools to test for lead, but they don't all have funding to pay for repairs. National data is spotty, but in one Harvard study of states that have a lead testing requirement, nearly half of schools found at least one faucet with unsafe levels. Angie Kratic was the lead researcher.
There were a considerable number of states that found what I would call detectable levels of lead.
Lead is a neurotoxin that's especially harmful to children because it can affect their brain development.
The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the EPA and other experts agree that there's no safe level of exposure to lead. And even at low levels of lead in the blood, children can have behavior or learning problems, lower IQ and hyperactivity, slower growth, hearing problems, anemia.
The EPA recommends that if any lead is detected in a faucet, action should be taken to reduce the concentration. That could range from replacing pipes to swapping out a single faucet. In Kratic's study, many locations needed to make repairs and at least one tap.
In other cases, many, many taps.
With this new North Carolina program, the good news is that federal funds will foot the bill for testing and repairs. The program is called Clean Classrooms for Carolina Kids. Here's the school's administrator, Samantha Ameral.
I was like, this can't be real. So you're mandating this, and you're bringing support, and you're giving us a step-by-step direction, and you're making it super easy for us.
Schools simply sign up and mail in test samples. The school's maintenance director, Raymond Melvin, shows me how he collected water from drinking fountains. First, he opens a sterile bottle.
Well, basically, I'm filling the bottle right up until the neck of the bottle.
Then he goes to the next tap and does the same.
Then I'm going to put it back into this bag to where we're going to ship it.
He sends the samples to RTI International, a North Carolina-based nonprofit. They're working with the state's Department of Health and Human Services to use $150 million in American Rescue Plan funding for the testing.
This is once-in-a-generation funding.
That's Jennifer Hoppenick Redman, director of the Clean Classrooms Program.
Our overall goal is to both identify and eliminate exposure to lead and asbestos hazards where North Carolina children learn and play. And we have funds to do it, so it's free. We're not just finding a problem, our goal is to help fix the problem.
Clean Classrooms for Carolina Kids aims to enroll all 3,100 public schools across the state, and it will test every tap in those schools, says Redman.
If we find a tap that has detectable lead, sometimes the tap right next to it's totally fine. And that's why it's really important to test every tap.
And if one does test positive for lead, well, a few weeks later, Maureen Joy Charter got its results back, says Samantha Ameral.
We were able to find out which faucets were giving out some, like, minor levels of lead, and we were able to replace those faucets within a week or so.
She says the program helped them resolve it quickly.
So we're just grateful to be able to do this for our kids and show that our kids are worth it.
The program is still working to enroll every school across the state by May 1st so they can complete testing before the federal funding expires. For Here and Now, I'm Liz Schlemmer.
Today on our podcast, Here and Now, anytime Florida lawmakers have voted...
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council's council recess session for May 13, 2024 is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volison.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. And the call is present. This afternoon, our invocation will be delivered by the vice mayor, Joseph Cobb. And I will, following the invocation, I will lead you to the place of allegiance. Please stand, please.
Loving Spirit, as we pause this day, we consider all of the gifts that we receive and that we care for. Part of the work of our council is to be stewards of those gifts, to find meaningful ways to put them to work and to care for our beautiful city. Be with us during our meeting today. Be with all that these gifts impact and the power of the transformation that lies within them. We pray all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, welcome, everybody, to this recess meeting. I want to, as we always do, let everybody know that this meeting, this recess meeting, will be televised live and replayed on RBTV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from... Is that... Okay. That's happened to me many times. Don't worry about it. That'll happen. See, everybody's going to get that. That'll happen. All right. RBTV will re, will televise and replay this meeting on Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays at 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM and video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. Now, this afternoon, City Council will be considering the following items for action in connection with the city's recommended 2024-2025 fiscal year budget effective July 1, 2024, along with some other related items. Council conducted public hearings on April 25 to receive public comments regarding the recommended FY 2024-2025 budget, the HUD budget, and proposed tax increase on real estate. The public hearings were open and closed that evening. All right, item number two is we want to introduce in consideration of ordinances and resolution. There's a certificate of the acting director of finance advising that funds required for the 2024-2025 general stormwater utility, civic facilities, parking, risk management, school general, school food, and grant budgets will be available for appropriation for the fiscal year July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. And so there's no action necessary on that without objection. Council will receive and file this information. All right, item A is a reaffirmation of real estate tax rate. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance adopting and reaffirming the real property tax rate as set forth in Article 2 of Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Roanoke and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item B, adoption of the fee compendium. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance adopting the City of Roanoke's electronic fee compendium for the 2024-25 fiscal year to be maintained by the Director of Finance reflecting certain fees, rates, penalties, and charges made by the city, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
I did, um, it's not a discussion, it's more of scribbler's errors than anything. I just wanted to bring attention to so that it would not continue to be repeated in the fee compendium that's online under the Director of Finance. On page eight, there is, let me get to it. On page eight, under the description for the Freedom of Information Act, it's a duplication, I believe, from the E911 fees. You've got it also listed again on, maybe you meant to, and it may just be me, where you're listing the fees themselves at $10 per report. I think, where did I see it? I saw this, I see page seven. I think I was thinking it was where you're asking for the cost in each civil criminal and traffic case. I think it was under courthouse maintenance fees and not for Freedom of Information Act request, where you're listing it under E911. Is that correct, or is it me?
That would be, this is handled by finance.
Okay, well, finance.
Somebody want to...
I don't think you...
I'm just looking back to whoever.
And like I said, I think it's just an error where it was just put over because it's repeating the same thing for the courthouse maintenance fees. And it's just being repeated under FOIA. And I'm just trying to see if it's supposed to be there or if it's a, if it's a mistake. And if it's me, that's fine.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Moon Reynolds, for bringing that to my attention. I just carried over the fee compendium from last year to this year since there were no changes, but I'll definitely take a look at that.
Would you look at that because...
And I appreciate that greatly, as you may know that there are a considerable number of fees on there, too, so...
Right. And that's why I was bringing it to your attention, because I didn't want it to continue to be broadcast over each year.
Right, absolutely.
And the other one is, let me get to my little notes here. On page 14, there is a misspelled word. I think it's supposed to be fee, and you have free. So that one would need to be corrected. And I'll give them all to you. The other one is a duplication again on pages 16 and 17, and the same thing on 25 and 27. So I'll go back over those with you just so that they don't be carried over into next year if someone is doing the research. And I just want to make sure the city manager that the only increase in fees will be the stormwater fee of 10 cents and that there are no additional increases...
That's correct.
Going forward.
Yeah, the stormwater fee is the multi-year adopted fee increase that you've all put in place, but there are no other fee increases proposed.
Right. I didn't see any, but I just wanted to, for the record, to be clear that that is the case. That was it, Mayor. I didn't have anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's it. All right, any other discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item C, the adoption of the annual general stormwater utility, civic facilities, parking, risk management, school general, school food services, and grant fund appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance adopting the annual general stormwater utility, civic facilities, parking, risk management, school general, school fund services, fund appropriations of the City of Roanoke for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. And this one, I believe, may be the city manager. This is the only way I could see some of the line items. And I was looking at them, comparing them to last year, and I just had a couple of questions. And this one is under the general fund, under your appropriations. I'm looking at, well, there were several. I'm looking at under, under community engagement. There, it went from 814,000 to 1.5 million. And I'm just trying to, I just wanted an understanding as to what is the large increase for that category?
I think there are, I believe there are two, two reasons for that, and Angie can correct me if I'm wrong here, but one of those is a couple of the positions that were previously grant-funded are coming into the general fund, so that's an increase.
And they're coming under community engagement?
Yes, yes. So all of our, all of our youth and gang violence coordination is in our community engagement office. The other is also some of the funds that we've pulled forward that were for, like, the Star City Safe Initiative, which had previously been ARPA-funded, is now inside that budget also.
So it's okay, okay. And then, the other question I have for you is, what about your development services? You went, you increased that, I believe, almost by $1 million, but yet decreased the community services. And I'm just trying to understand the development services and community services.
Yeah, so the community services is what picks up all of our CDVG and other expenses, I believe, in that the development services piece is, if you're talking about the appropriation for the revenue side, that is predominantly due, if you remember, two year, a year ago, we actually put the fee increase in place to update the, the fees that are collected for development services. And so those, that revenue has gone up substantially associated with it, so that's why it's attached to the appropriation. There's actually no additional increases in expenditures in development services. There's actually a decrease in personnel associated with it. So I think it's all tied to the, to the actual revenue coming in through the permitting process.
So, so, so that is what the $1 million increase will be...
Correct, is associated with that revenue increase, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, under athletics, I saw where you decreased that funding from 891 to 514,000. What was the basis for decreasing athletics?
That may, Trinity, you want to talk, you want to come up on that one? Because I think that may be just a shift in what category we put that in, but I want to make certain, so...
So most of those kind of appropriations, changes from last year, departments were given their base budgets and they had to reallocate what they thought their programs would be for '25. So most of those shifts would be base adjustment from '24 to '25. So if you look through the planning development...
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
My fault.
The planning budget or the Parks and Rec, it's really just reshifting from unit to unit just to make sure they have money athletics, youth development, and other areas.
So there's, so the 7.8 million, the bottom line number, has increased for the Parks Department inside each of those categories?
Right, so just reshuffling.
So you shifted the money out, out of athletics and decreased the athletic account, but the youth development did not change. It was, you just went down by almost, almost 400 and some thousand dollars, no, 3,000, 300 and some thousand dollars in athletics.
What about the park management landscape? So if you put it all together, there should be a good shift from different...
I saw where park management went up by $100,000.
Okay.
So is, so is that where part of your...
Yes, the part of it is mostly the shift, like I said, from different programming and how parks are planning on programming for '25.
Okay, because I saw a big, substantial increase in your greenways and trails, which was okay. Last year, you was at about 339, and this year, you had at 841. But you decreased the events by, from 434,000 to 258,000.
Yeah, so events you used to have personnel related to it in FY '24. So we moved those as per discussion with the management over there, that they wanted their personnel to be under a specific unit. So we split them out and removed them from being charged out of the events unit into the other areas. So personnel movement is also part of that.
Okay. Okay. And the other thing I noticed is under the enhanced community service for VJCCCA, you decreased that, and you also, you decreased yours, I think I'm looking at this right, substance abuse services. And I'm just trying to figure out why that was, and also went less to the health department by 1.4 million.
All three of those are, are actually provided to us by those agencies, by those entities. So the health department one, for example, the state two years ago changed the funding formula, and the first year actually was a significant decrease. This year, it went up slightly. It's still a decrease, but the decrease was slightly less than it was before. But those are actually, in all three of those instances, those are those agencies, they actually tell us what ultimately the bill is associated with.
So they are offering the decrease in the fund?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And that, that stands in contrast, for example, with Blue Ridge Behavioral, which similarly, we're told what needs to be included in the budget. That actually went up this year based off of the usage numbers they've provided us.
Okay. Okay. I think, and I think you're probably saying this happens simulink. Under police patrol, you decreased your patrol fund for that, and, but you increased the police services. So there was a switch between allocating the money...
Right, and if you look at investigation as well, I believe that also went up. So it was reallocating most of the personnel and the programming, how they want to move forward in '25.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I think, I believe that's it. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, no, I just want to take a second. I just want to thank Trinity and Cory and Angie and Sam and Bob for the one-on-one meetings that we had individually to go through the entire budget. Took, you know, it was almost over an hour, but I just want to thank you guys for taking time to do that so that we would clearly understand what we were doing moving forward today. So thank you.
All right.
Mayor Lee.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on that comment, just to thank everyone involved in this budget process. I know it takes a long time and that we're dealing with slightly less revenue than we thought we might have had later in the year last year, but that the departments came together and found out a way to put together budgets that, that worked for them with what were allotted. And I'm glad we have this to vote on today.
All right, thank you. All right. Where are we, Madam Clerk?
It's time for me to call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
All right. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, item D is the endorsement of the capital improvement program update FY 2025 to 2029. We've got two measures. The first is the resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution endorsing the update to the capital improvement program submitted by the city manager in the city council agenda report of May 13, 2024.
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right, hurry now, did you have any?
Just a quick comment to thank. I know that, again, how long it took to develop these and those projects that we have to shift around just because they may have moved from where they were in the list, they are still a priority. It's important this council recognizes how much construction costs are increasing, so I'm happy that we're taking care of what we can when we can.
Thank you. All right. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All right. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right, we got a budget ordinance.
Move the budget, all right, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph. Is this second? I didn't hear it second.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the FY 2025 through 2029 update to the capital improvement program, amending and re-identifying certain sections of the FY '25 general and capital projects...
capital projects, funds, appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pritty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you all. Item E, the letter E, is the appropriation of fiscal year 2023, year-end funds for use in fiscal year 2024, there's one measure, which is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Madam Clerk?
We need a second?
Did we get a second?
Oh, okay, Trish, I didn't see you. Okay, I'll read the title paragraph.
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the FY2023 fund balance surplus to various capital projects and operational cost, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the FY2024 general and capital projects appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pritty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item F is an adoption of the school board funding policy, there's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution amending the school funding policy for funding the city's school division dated May 9th, 2011, and as amended, that provides funding for the Roanoke City Public Schools to clarify certain adjustments to the amount provided to Roanoke City Public Schools and adopting the fifth amended school funding policy.
All right, uh, is that, do you, now, Ms. Sanchez Jones, when did you make your?
Yes, she can do it now.
Yes, she has a statement to read.
Okay.
I, Vivian Sanchez Jones, state that I have a personal interest in agenda item number two F regarding the proposed amendment to the school funding policy, because I am an employee of the city of Roanoke Public School Division, and as such, have a personal interest in this matter. Therefore, in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112, I will refrain from participating in this matter. I ask that the city clerk accept this, this statement, and ask that it would make part of the minutes for this meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, any discussion by members of council? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Well, I don't know if that side want to go first or not, but I do have some comments. I was, I don't know if, okay, I guess it's me then. Okay, thank you. I took some time to try to research this, because I wanted to have understanding, and I went back, actually, all the way to 2011. In 2011, the council revised the school funding policy for Roanoke City Public Schools, allocating to forty percent of local taxes with adjustments for district taxes and performance agreements. This policy undergoes three-year reviews or with unrelated tax changes. The amendments were enacted into 2013, and there was also one in 2014, adjusting a couple of tax adjustments and some fund transfer timing. Further revisions occurred in 2016 and 2018, which involved excluding some specific taxes, which was at the, I think it was, the Burglary Center and a couple of other things, I think it was the meals tax. And in August 2023, the council had created a subcommittee to convene, to review the funding formula with recommendations not fully backed by the schools. And that's where I'm kind of unclear on the terminology that was used for the year-end funding adjustments, particularly the term where I heard shore up, and then there was a term, this was by the schools who said shore up, and then in the policy here from the city and in the resolution, we're using the term surplus. So my understanding is that shore up more or less implies stabilizing or reinforcing, and where surplus more or less is just where there's access. So now, also, in the, in my research, I saw previous reports that brought forth the history, and in this instance, there isn't a report detailing the mythology of explaining this particular change that you're doing in the formula policy. So I'm reluctant in that instance to support this policy revision, but I do ask that the matter be continued, if possible, to deliberate, to come to a consensus with the schools, because I think there is still some disconnect there, and I would even suggest perhaps having others with institutional knowledge of the school funding, such as perhaps former council members that were involved at that time, even school board trustees, and maybe those that were in the school system as well as in the city administration, for them to come back with, and with some type of method that council can consider. And by doing so, I think this will allow for a comprehensive deliberation, and a more of an informed decision-making process. And I also want to take the time to acknowledge and extend my appreciation to those who did send the emails, and also who called to urge and caution us in adopting this particular revision that is labeled as the year-end surplus. I didn't have any, really any reservations for the changing of the date from the 15th to the end of the month, but I did have a question as to, and I didn't see what was the reasoning behind it, and I just wanted to have my, to refresh my mind as to the basis for wanting to change it from the 15th to the end of the month. I remember it, but I want to be clear in why this was being done. I know it had to do with the interest or whatever from that, so if someone could just clarify that, I would appreciate it.
Let me just say before, there is no further comment, I don't think we need former school board members and former city councilmen to come back and tell us where we are, what we've done with this. I mean, our circumstance have changed so much, even really from school board members that left a couple of years ago, I mean, not school board members, but council members, but I've, I've gotten some of those members and some of those inquiries, and I've responded to them and shared with them that it's a, this is a different day, the environment is different, we've got things that we need to consider that we didn't have to consider back then, at least while I was on council, and it's been, this is my twentieth budget, so your statement regarding former school board members, the council members to give us some insight, I, I don't see how that would be beneficial, at least.
More or less, I was referring there to the committee, not to the council, but those who serve on the committee to help have understanding as to why we are doing what we are doing. And sometimes that knowledge of history helps to make those decisions, not to bring it to council, but to help the two that we appointed, or that you all appointed, to serve on this subcommittee, as well as what the schools did to bring the two that they wanted to serve on this subcommittee. That's where I'm at with that.
Well, the committee can speak to that, they're here too.
Yes, just the two, yes, right ahead.
And I have, I'm not sure if we just did not communicate well, or we talked, because, Ms. Moon Reynolds, we have spoken about the formula where we came up with it. In fact, you were one of the ones who encouraged this in the beginning, because you thought we needed to retain the surplus and offered to be on the committee, and the mayor decided to appoint Vice Mayor Cobb, so I know you've since changed your mind.
I did talk with you, I did not change my mind, no, 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 no.
Okay.
What I, what you and I did within an hour, or a little more than an hour, we did talk. That was the only conversation we had, and we talked about the surplus, what the surplus looked like, and also, we talked about the 15th of the month to the end of the month.
Yes, we did, you and I talked about that.
And I'm bringing all that back, and since that time, I did have an opportunity to talk to the other side, which said it was not a surplus. In actuality, it was shore, it was shoring up what was actually, should be part of the forty percent. And that's where I'm just trying to get understanding. I heard both sides, and I'm just still confused in it, trying to, trying to find a consensus on where we at, and why is it a surplus? If it's not a surplus, why is it being called a surplus, instead of being what is due them at the end of the year to help make them whole?
So in our discussions, we spoke with members of the school board, Mr. Cobb and I, and we had our finance director there, or our deputy finance directors at the time. It is what we are considering, the surplus. We're talking about anything that, that the city receives beyond the estimated amount of revenue that we anticipate. If we anticipate three hundred million, and we get three hundred and twenty-five million, they would receive forty percent of the twenty-five million minus those things that are in the formula, like you mentioned, the Burglary Center, can't rattle them all off the top of my head, but we have, we have talked about that. In fact, the impetus for this committee came from you and I having discussions about the surplus, how it would be beneficial for the city to be able to decide how that money could be used, if there's an opportunity for that. And we are talking about hypotheticals, we don't know if there's going to be a surplus, we're talking about if there is a possible surplus. The members of council would like the opportunity to look at what we have in front of us as far CIP, what the schools have on, on their table, the things that they need, and the council could decide what would be the best at the, at the moment for that surplus. That's all we're doing, we're talking about, we're not talking about changing the formula. I know that's what, you know, the, the word is, or people are saying, or the miscommunication is, but we're not changing that part of the formula, we are only talking about the surplus. Now, if I'm wrong, or I misunderstood this entire process, somebody please correct me.
And that's all I'm trying to do, is just trying to get understanding on the process, because that's what I'm hearing, and I heard, just like you all, received an email from a former colleague who said the same thing about this surplus or what have you. So I'm just, and I wasn't part of that, so I'm just trying to make sure I make the most informed decision.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's all I'm trying to do.
I just don't want there to be any confusion that we're changing, the school will get forty percent, and, you know, we, we want our schools to, to thrive like they have. We've got schools surrounding us in Franklin County, closing several schools, Bedford closing a school, you know, we are, we just opened the, the day tech, you know, we, we are in a good shape, and we want to continue that way, we want to make sure our schools are the best in this area. All we are talking about is a surplus, a potential surplus.
I don't have anything to add.
I know, I mean, it's just a simple, I mean.
No, I mean, I'm just trying, like I said, I'm just trying to get understanding.
But I didn't want to, I didn't want to put anybody on the spot, so I took the liberty to respond to you, but like I said, we're talking about the surplus, and I, I don't know, I don't know how to make it any clearer.
And that's what I'm saying, you and I saying the same thing, I don't know. And that's all I'm trying to do, is just trying to.
Okay, I've attempted to explain it to you, but.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate it.
Well, I don't understand why we get every budget, this is the twentieth budget, every year, we get to this point, we talked about this, and we've been talking about it for months, and now, all of a sudden, we get people not understanding what we're doing, and, and all those kinds of things, so, Vice Mayor, you're sure the only committed, do you have any thoughts or anything to add to this?
The only thing I'll add is that the, the shift from the 15th to 30th was due to interest, it was interest-related.
I think she understood that, right.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
And that's what I was saying, I just wanted to show I was clear in the shift.
That's it.
That much I did, I did understand, and I don't think there was any concerns addressed to that shift, that that was.
All right, any other comments, discussions? All right, Ms. Pritty?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I'll ask you and this council to, please bear me, bear with me as long as you can, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the end, which is my plea. I believe the votes are here to adopt this policy on this council. In a few moments, I'm gonna go into the issues that I have with the policy and what the amendments are to it, at least as they're currently proposed, but what I would like for this council to consider is potentially tapling this until December of this year, knowing that the votes are here to pass this, to give this council and other stakeholders an opportunity to come up with an alternative. And if that alternative is not better than what is before this council now, then this policy, I expect, would be adopted, but I, I would hate to see council adopt what's being put before us today, based on the implications that it's going to have. I'm thankful for Councilmember Moon Reynolds for going into what some of the history was about this, but my concern about this policy and any funding formula policy changes are really about the future and what this sets up. There's already some confusion today about what this will do and the implications it will have, and I think that with what this sets up, we set up a scenario where every year, we could have some politicization of what is referred to in this policy as the surplus of what our revenues are. Now, that, I would ask council to, to consider all the points I'm going to bring up as they think about what this alternative could be, that I think could put council on a better footing. You know, when you look at all of the former versions of this policy that have gone through, they have gone through at least unanimously amongst council members that were present, despite the ability to know that my grandstanding will stop that today, I don't think I will be, hopefully not the only one, to know that this would not be a unanimous adoption to this original policy or to this change, based on what it will do. This is the first version of this policy that ever uses the term surplus, and I think that's probably where we got off to the wrong start. Every time beforehand, and how this has been perceived is, it is a forty percent of what are the actual revenues at the end of the year, that the term surplus itself implicates that there is some kind of excess to be had. But when truly this policy is set in place of, like, how much funds should go to each location, the, the revenue, when we say surplus, is just based on what our projections are. My understanding is that the schools deal with the projections that we give them, they're not set at deciding what our projections are, and, and even based in that, any good projection should at least be a little bit conservative, because you never want to overspend your expenditures versus the revenues that are coming in. So a sound policy itself should have some kind of, we suppose referred to here as surplus at the end of the year. You know, they won't control the projections, I, I've heard things based on the department needs that we have, and how the schools receive more than our, our public safety and other officers combined together is one area in our budget, but the truth is, is that this funding formula change won't change that, it will only give us the opportunity to address our capital debt needs, and that, that might be some, somewhere that needs to be explored, or if we have one-time needs, that, that's all this policy will allow us to do and change. But the implications for politicization of having the school board come back every year and make additional requests, to frankly, fight over what is going to be this extra money at the end, I just really sets us on a bad road down the line. Every version of this policy to this point, I believe Councilmember Moon Reynolds brought this up earlier, has generally been something that's been supported by both sides or pointed to a specific need of this city, whether or not it's been a particular carve-out for some kind of tax or another, and I think that without even having to put the impetus on them to come up with a reason to find out how they can do with less, this council can come up with what is that other defined need that will result in the city receiving more money than the current formula now than the schools do, so we can address this problem in the long run. What I'm hearing is concerns about the ongoing needs that this city has, an ongoing issue, not, not a one-time issue with how to address this, and I think that kind of change would put us on a better footing going forward. Other issues, just procedurally, you know, this school board workgroup committee was formed in, in July of last year, when we came together, and we were supposed to have a, a report at our December meeting. I understand the work hadn't been done at that time, it had been completed, so they needed to continue, and that's where we are now, but I also don't feel like the other objectives that were part of that motion and resolution really came forward. We were supposed to get monthly reports on what was occurring, and I never received those minutes myself till more recently. I didn't feel like I was getting a monthly report at this council, I don't think the public was concerned with being able to see what it was that was being done. I had a group of parents who reached out to me, who wanted to be able to speak out against what is being considered during the public hearing, and all I was able to share it, that was. And all I was able to share with them is that, and I did not give them the funding formulas that have been currently sent to me, because nothing was public. Nothing had been shared out there. I even sent a long email to one of the members of this committee, expressing that if this is going to be adopted on our budget day, a day of which we allow no public comments to be said, that at least the version of this policy that is going to be adopted should be put out there publicly before that public hearing, so that they know exactly what it is we're discussing, and not giving speculation. Um, but I, I understand that did not occur, and it may have not been required to. Uh, I, I think taking more time would give the opportunity for people to see what's actually being proposed, and maybe come up with ideas that we haven't yet considered. Um, I think that we might be able to come up with something that may either have potentially school board support, or at least, um, not their opposition. Uh, if, if they are so opposed to what this change is, what this means for council-schoolboard relations down the line, and, and they will be able to work with it, but I really don't think we should adopt it. Now, when it comes to how does this change the formula, you know, the, the first line in the formula, as it comes up, is the city will provide funding to our city public schools in an amount equal to forty percent of local taxes received by the city, unless those adjusted, noted below. What is being considered today, when you say that if there's a surplus, the actual revenues are higher, and the policy sets it at being no more than receiving forty percent of what that surplus can be, you're already setting the scenario where the schools will never again receive more, or up to forty percent. It's saying they can, I, I would even say that should be changed, the schools will only receive up to forty percent of local taxes projected each year, because that's essentially what this policy does. Um, now, there's, there's other points in this policy. At, at the end of it, it does say that city council reserves the right to impose new local taxes, or increase current local taxes, in order to fund specific needs of the city other than education, and this policy be revised upon implementation of such changes. I think that if we truly have ongoing needs, and that's the direction that we need to go, we need to find out what is going to be a solution for our underlying budget, and what's not just going to give us the ability to decide what to do with the actual revenue funds that come in at the end of the year, which will set up, if we've seen the opposition between us and the school board on this policy, is what we can expect every year coming down the line, whenever there will be a surplus. Otherwise, we need to set projections at a rate where we're gonna have the budget and figure out and get money back from the schools every year, because we're gonna be telling them that the projections are too high. Um, there, there's a whole host of other things that I could go into in this. I mean, I, I got all of the history going back to two thousand and eleven. Uh, I've considered all the implications. I just really think that this council has the power to come up with an alternative that may put them on a better footing for future years, that doesn't set up the politicization that we see under this policy change. And I would ask them, knowing that this is even delayed from taking effect, to consider that before adopting this today.
Mr. Mayor, if I, um, I just want to correct Mr. Pretty on, on one thing in particular. There was full transparency. Um, our vice mayor, who served as chair, reported out to this council numerous occasions, so I'm not sure if you were here or you were not here, but, but he did report out, and those, these meetings are public. So, it, it was not like the, the public did not know what we were doing, because he took the time to go through a thorough report, um, on several occasions. So, that, that's number one. And number two, I, I certainly appreciate what you're saying, I think we all do. I think our employees, um, and our other staff also appreciate the fact that we're trying to figure out a way to, uh, to, to balance our budget, to make sure that, that the city's needs are met. And I don't think there's anything wrong with us advocating for ways to, to build our bridges, to pave our roads, to pay our employees, to pay our fire department, who, that, you know, we're still waiting to, to get their compensation where it should be, to be competitive. I don't think there's anything that we're doing is wrong, and I don't think that, that you should imply that we're doing something, or asking for something, that would be detrimental to our schools, because we know for a fact that we would never do anything to impede our schools. But what we are trying to do is make sure that there's some balance, so that we can build those bridges that we need, so that we can build that fire station that we put on hold this year, and that library that we put on hold this year, and those employees who are still waiting to be compensated the way they should be as city employees. So I just want, you know, the, the public to know that we care as well. We care about the schools, and we care about our city and our employees. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, uh, are you done?
I, I'd just like to, um, reply to that, because I, I agree with, um, the councilwoman's underlying sentiment of needing to be able to address our compensation, be able to address our ongoing needs, but are even cited as some of our capital needs one time. But the solution to that is seeking some kind of formula change that gives us more operating revenue on an annual basis, something that gives us more certainty with, to address all the problems that we have, rather than looking at what happens with actual revenue projections versus what we thought they were going to be when we adopt this budget now. That we can't address compensation with one-time funds, unless we expect that there's going to be a surplus every year, then that's where we find that source from. I just, I, I really do believe that there is an alternative that would end up with the city receiving more than they do under the current formula, but that would give the schools the certainty that they need to draft and develop their budget and adopt it, it would give this city the ability to draft and develop its budget with more certainty, and it would ease some of the tension that we've seen even in consideration of this policy, and get rid of the politicization that we might see for years to come.
All right. Mr. Volson.
I'd like to call the question, Mayor.
All right.
It's, we need two thirds to call it.
Call for question. All right.
Is substitute motion?
So you made your motion. What is, would you repeat the motion?
To, uh, to table this matter to the first meeting in December of this year.
I'll second it.
Mayor Lee speaking to the motion.
Uh.
Very brief.
Yeah, true.
Just to reiterate, it leaves it in the power of this council, who I know is poised and prepared to adopt the formula as it is today, but it allows the time to consider an alternative, to come up with a solution, that will address the longer ongoing needs. And I, I would urge you to please consider that. Adopt it then, if not now.
All right.
Can, is there, just, I know the question's been called. Is there discussion on the motion, since it's a motion before us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate all the feedback. I'm disappointed that it's the day we're voting on it. I'm very disappointed in that. I have a phone, I have email. Uh, any of these questions could have been directed to me or Trish, uh, prior to this, where we could have talked through other options. Um, one option that I've, you know, talked through with my school board buddy, I'll just share it with you, is, um, you know, the possibility of, and I shared this in an email to council, in, in considering this in the future, is to have, as part of that process shift, to have conversation with the school board on a shared project, something of, of that forty percent, something that the city and the schools could agree on, to collaborate on, and then the other percentage of that could go to a school identified project. That's part of a collaborative conversation that's a shift in the process. My understanding of this is it's, it's a shift in the process in terms of how we reach a decision. It's not necessarily saying the schools are not going to get forty percent. It's asking them to present their priorities to us, just like we get priorities presented. And I, I find that, personally, I find that very helpful, because I think it gives us a sense of what their one-time needs are, what their extended needs are. It's, to me, it's a way to extend and elaborate on the conversation. Um, so I'm looking at this from a process standpoint, in terms of having additional information, uh, and that's the approach that I've taken. I know there's been disagreement about it, um, and, you know, this, what I just shared with you might be a collaborative way to address that. I will also share that if this is approved today, this would not have any effect on next year's, uh, year up, or shore up, or surplus funding. It would be the following year. So if there's a subsequent council that wants to, to look at this, to address it, uh, differently, then that would be that council's role. Uh, but it would not apply to next year's surplus. We just approved that year-end twenty-three, this year. Year-end twenty-four would have the same formula that we've been operating on. It would be the following year, and I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. I'll call him for the, call for the vote.
But this is on the motion to table.
Yes, on the motion to table. Ms. Whiteboy?
No.
Mr. Volason?
No.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Miss, nope, I'm sorry. Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
No.
And Mayor Lee?
No. All right. So we.
Call the question. Call the roll on the main motion, which is the resolution.
Pardon me, I didn't hear that.
She's gonna call the roll on the resolution.
Okay.
All right, on the res- resolution. Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
No.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And so the resolution passes. Thank you. All right. All right, I'm G, the adoption of a pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers, and constitutional officers of the city, and authorization for certain salary adjustments and merit increases and monthly stipends for certain boards and commission members effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Does an ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to adopt and establish a pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers, and constitutional officers of the city, effective July first, twenty twenty-four, providing for certain salary adjustments, authorizing specific annual pay supplements, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Discussion by members of council.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment, and then I have a question, if I may. Uh, the comment is, I want to thank, thank, I guess, the city manager, or the city attorney, for the transparency on, excuse me, including, excuse me, including the council-appointed officials' salaries in the pay plan ordinance, so there is full disclosure. But my question is on, um, the, uh, paragraph fourteen, where we look at, there was an inclusion of, which was not included last year, uh, insert it in for a special projects manager to receive a, receive an annual salary supplement. And I just want to know who or where is that coming from, for this special projects manager, uh, to receive this pay supplement?
Which page is that on, Stephanie?
Uh, this is under, uh, paragraph number fourteen, where you go under the position titles and annual supplement. It doesn't have a page number.
Looks like seven.
But is it about seven? Page eight?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna, yeah.
Yeah.
Paragraph fourteen starts on page seventy-nine, ninety-one.
And, and I'm just.
But it's paragraph fourteen.
So I'm scrolling down to make sure that I know.
It's towards the bottom.
Yeah. And mine just goes over to the next one.
Fourth from the top, I mean, fourth from the bottom.
Right.
Special projects.
Yeah, it's about.
Yeah, I actually don't believe that one should be in there.
Yeah.
Because I don't know what position that would be associated with, so I don't, I don't think it's.
Because it wasn't included in your prior adoptions, and I'm seeing it in this one.
And I'm removing it, this is just part of the process.
Okay, that's why I, I just saw it put in.
Motion to remove that.
I would make a motion that this, uh, that special projects manager for a annual salary supplement in the amount of two thousand dollars be removed. Is there a second?
Wait, any, is there any discussion on that, or is that?
So we need to, what do you ask? You want, I want it to be removed. They don't know how I got in there, or what it's about. I'm just asking that if you take it out.
Yeah, and really, the whole, the whole line should be started.
If, if they don't know what it's, I, I would second that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, to take it out. Yeah. Okay.
All right, that's been a motion, second.
Uh, yeah, I second, and so we're gonna go on the revised.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna be voting on it. Madam Clerk, the revised, uh, adoption plan.
All right, I'll call.
Thank you, please.
Um, Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right, so the, or the revised ordinance passes.
No, you, that's, that's right.
Right, that was the amended, now you can vote on the whole one.
All right, now.
And I'll call the roll.
All right. Madam Clerk, hold on one minute.
All right. Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. As the vice mayor stated before I closed, I think it's always been the practice when we get to this point, that most questions are worked out. I mean, we've had meetings after meetings after meetings, and we get here at this point where we're just to look, to deal with the budget. I, I mean, and I think it, you know, this, I, I don't think it had, at one time, it was not an area where we discussed certain things. I think we're pretty much agreeable to where we are, uh, at this point. But I guess time changes, and I guess, hopefully, the new council will, at this point, will get to the point where they're understanding of where we are, and the discussions and the meetings, and so we can move through this with, uh, with not a lot of debate from the diocese, or discussion from the diocese on these, these matters. Uh, because I think we're all in agreement, and I think it's nothing, nothing here that we hadn't seen or discussed during the preparation for the budget. So with that being said, uh, we're going to go to other business, and that is three eighth, where we're gonna, we have a closed meeting, a communication from councilmember Patricia Whiteboy, Chair of the City Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven Code of Virginia as amended.